Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the February 7, 2025, special meeting of San Diego Community Power Board of Directors. I am Paloma Aguirre, Chair of the Board and the representative for the City of Imperial Beach. We welcome members of the public, community power staff and board members joining us in person today at the Port of San Diego Administration Building. I will now call the meeting to order. Mary, Mari, can you please?
Director Asensio.
I'm here.
Director Schaefer.
Here.
Director Lacava.
Present.
Director Suzuki.
Here.
Director Yamani.
Here.
Vice Chair Larson Reimer.
Chair Aguirre.
Here.
We have a core, my own chair.
Great, thank you, Mari. Let's please stand and turn to the flags for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next up is the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that this meeting is taking place on the land of the original inhabitants of the greater San Diego region. A land acknowledgement is a critical step toward working with native communities to create meaningful partnerships and inclusion in the stewardship and protection of their cultural resources and homelands. Let's take a moment to honor these ancestral grounds that were the traditional lands of the Huamia. Thank you. So today, there will be no general public, as this is a special meeting. Members of the public are afforded the opportunity to speak on any agenda item before or during the board's consideration of the item pertaining to Government Code Section 54954.3. At a special meeting, no other business may be considered, and there is no general public comment period. We will now move on to item number one, review and approval of 2025 rates. I will turn it over to Jack Clark, Chief Operating Officer, Lucas Uto, Senior Director of Data Analytics and Customer Operations, and Tim Manglitt-Mott, Director of Finance, to present the item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Directors. Good morning, members of the public and community power staff. My name is Jack Clark and the Chief Operating Officer here at Community Power. I'm joined here today by Lucas Uto, our Director of Data Analytics and Customer Operations, and Tim Manglitt-Mott, our Director of Finance. Today, we want to ask you to approve a rate recommendation that is centered around the needs of San Diegans for today and into the future. As representatives of your communities, you hear firsthand accounts, the affordability struggles of working families, and understand the long-lasting impact a vote can have on the people an agency serves. We understand that affordability is a top priority for everyone. In fact, we work closely with our customers of all segments and listen to their concerns on a daily basis. Community Power was created as a not-for-profit public agency to bring cleaner, cheaper electricity to everyone in our communities. Today, we have an opportunity to make good on that promise. Last year, we dropped rates on an average of more than 17% for our customers. This year, we're poised to lower those charges even further. Our work process centers on providing the best value possible for our customers while maintaining a solid financial footing so we can continue to drive competition in the marketplace for decades to come. Next slide, please. San Diego Community Power was the first community choice aggregator to establish a rate development policy. We took this step in 2022 to codify the guiding principles of our organization as the board sets rates each and every year. Staff creates the rate proposal in a way that balances our objectives seen here on the left and the priorities of our organization as seen here on the right. And as a reminder, even though we've come a long way over a short time period, we are still a very young organization, working to reach our financial targets that will provide resiliency and customer value for years to come. While we're only going to discuss three scenarios today, our staff has analyzed a number of configurations before we've had the full and final information from SDGNE received just recently, as of last week. This due diligence led us to the conclusion that the rates we are recommending to you today strike the balance necessary to provide the greatest discount possible while ensuring that Community Power will be here to serve our customers for years to come. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Lucas Uto, who will walk you through the rate development process and present the options we consider.
Good morning, members. Happy Friday. For the record, my name is Lucas Uto. I'm the Senior Director of Data Analytics and Customer Operations. Over to the next slide, please. So this slide essentially captures the typical rate timeline. This year, it's a little bit different, but generally speaking, for a typical rate timeline, SCGNE filings are on the top of the chart, and on the bottom are all the activities that San Diego Community Power undertakes as it relates to the SCGNE filings. This slide in particular, SCGNE had a delay of more than a year with the commission, which essentially has necessitated us to move our timeline accordingly, kind of loading with the special voting today. Generally speaking, in a regular timeline, we would have some kind of negative rate options in January to be effective as of 21. Obviously, 21 as already comes, it's 27, and we're doing some recommendation, retroactively speaking. On to the next slide, please. So this is the timeline, and we wanted to provide the, essentially, the differences between this timeline and the one previous to it. We are delivering nothing, and that was essentially as a factor of the that SCGNE has to build with the commission, and that is culminating with the rate recommendation that we're bringing to the board today. Over to the next slide, please. So what has been done? And with regards to the scenario analysis, we have a lot of combinations across many elements of various factors. And staff essentially settled on these three that represented the bid to that. And we look through the synopsis from down to the right-hand side. That's the first option, then comes another option. And for this option, essentially, we analyze the mechanics of customer type. So this makes sense, perhaps, from a financial perspective. Position. What customers can expect to see. And this kind of option, although it allows for us to meet our financial objectives, strategic self-confidence, it is necessarily going to allow customers to recognize their relief in the here and now. And so in the consumer option, you see the checkbox at the bottom, meaning your middle line, credit rating, metrics, our debt service coverage ratio, SCGNE strategic 180-day cash on hand. But if you look at the premium, right, essentially, you enter a 21% relative to SCGNE for power on. And essentially, you can buy tab, which is our low-cost option relatively from from what we currently are in 2024 rates. You have a little change within, you know, in the SECP, Community Power's rates, up 7%. And we said, okay, let's go ahead and take a look at the option that essentially meets the customers where they are today, recognizing through all that system wisdom for all of us, right, as wait payers, and balancing the needs of the organization. That allows for us to balance that very delicate line between customer affordability while also maintaining stability for the organization, relatively now, but obviously for years to come. And so with the BaaS approach, you can see that the power meter product will come 3% below for our SCGNE. We are essentially lowering the discount for power bills, which is our low-cost service option from 21% currently in the 2014 rates that the board approved in May, to 5%. And year over year, in terms of our Community Power rate change, that equates to 2.8% on average. And this is predominantly driven by the negative FCI that we essentially see in the SCGNE filings for 2025. What this balance approach helps us to do is essentially advocate for consumer affordability, which is a concern in the here and now, and also balancing out with the needs of the organization that allow for us to meet all of our financial objectives, which then allow for San Diego Community Power to offer meaningful value, not only in 2025, but for years to come, which is why we were formed to begin with. And going over to the uncertain option, the last option on the right, as a strong consumer advocate myself, right? Part of my role here at San Diego Community Power is to always advocate for the customer. We wanted to test out the furthest discounts that we could possibly do for the customer. And so we analyzed a 5% discount on our DPO power on product and also a 7% discount for our power base product to see what that would entail. And for that option, as tempting as it is, right, for the consumer advocates such as myself and most of you here on the dais, it would be financially imprudent to essentially do that option simply because it doesn't allow for the organization long-term financial health, right, to allow for us to be a going concern not only in 2025, but for years to come. So for this option, even though the discounts for both power on and power base are slightly more than the balance option, you can clearly see on the bottom that it doesn't allow for the organization to meet our current ratings metrics, our debt service coverage ratio, and certainly our 180-day cash on hand. And we're going to pass the baton over to my colleague, Tim, to run through the next presentation.
Thanks, Lucas. Good morning, Chair Aguirre, Board of Directors. My name is Timothy Manglitt-Mott, Director of Finance at Community Power. So kind of following on to what Lucas mentioned, if you go to the next slide. In consideration of the three scenarios and in consideration of the staff recommended balanced scenario, we considered a number of different risk factors. Now, your member jurisdictions have similar risk factors here, where, for example, an earthquake could hit, and your public works teams would need to, you know, potentially fix streets and get materials over in order to fix streets to get your constituents up and running. Community Power has very similar risk factors that are very unique to Community Power. These risk factors are compounding on one another, meaning that one risk factor could happen, a second could happen, a third could happen, and they're not mutually exclusive. All risk factors are also very volatile. One of the areas, I think, are considerably higher than what you would see in your member jurisdictions, especially because of energy. The new risk factors, the first one I want to point out is SCGNE rates. It's entirely possible that SCGNE could lower their rates by 10 percentage points, and it looks something similar back in 2022. If Community Power did the same thing and lowered our rates in lockstep, that would translate to about $200 million hit to our net income and to our reserves. And that's something that we need to plan for, especially because we are in competition with IOUs. And the next big one here is participation rates. Community Power does have a really good participation rate at 95.4%. Some of our colleagues to the north, though, they've seen participation rates drop as low as 80%, especially in competition with the IOUs. And so if that were to happen to Community Power, that would translate to about $73 million hit to our reserves. And it's something that we want to plan for, and it's something we considered really closely when we recommended that balanced scenario. Kind of a third big risk factor for Community Power are heat waves. I live in Community Power, I've lived in San Diego for most of my life, and I think every single year, I've seen a heat wave hit San Diego. Two years ago, you guys might remember, there was a protracted heat wave that lasted two to three weeks. For Community Power, we didn't plan for it necessarily, and that cost us about $30 to $40 million, just in terms of reserves. Now, on average, a heat wave would cost the agency about $22 million. And again, it's a big risk factor for the agency and a real big area that we want to plan for. And again, is why we are recommending the balanced scenario, because it kind of blends in later in terms of affordability now, but also financial stability for our customers in the future. But then kind of the last two here, so the regulatory legislative landscape. As I think all of you is probably aware, there was a lot of things coming through from the federal administration in terms of rolling back certain renewable initiatives, for example, with Inflation Reduction Act, and the potentially imposing tariffs onto certain products that could affect the renewable market. I have an example, it's entirely possible that tariffs for Chinese goods will put a lot of PV solar panels, for example, could potentially raise the price for solar and for long-term energy storage projects, products that we're purchasing energy for. I have no idea what that might do, but it could lead to things, for example, like delays to some of our long-term PPAs, our long-term projects, that could affect our bottom line, and it's just a really uncertain thing that we need to plan for. And then last, but certainly not least, is just general energy market uncertainty. If you go to the next slide, when this board looked at rates back in March 2021, we thought that our energy rates in this current calendar or fiscal year for 2025, we thought that our energy costs would be $400 million back in March 2021. Back to today, to today's presentation, the energy costs that we forecasted back in 2021 have been linked all the way up to $1.1 billion. That's, to be exact, that's a $7671 increase from what we thought our energy costs were today and back in 2021. It's humongous. If you just think the amount of reserves that we have currently, that's almost double the amount of reserves that we have in the bank. We're at about 150% of our strategic goal, 180-day cash on hand reserve target. So this is a huge area that we have to plan for, and it's one of the big reasons why we want to build reserves, we want to get to investment-grade credit rating, and a big reason why that we are recommending the balanced scenario, again, so that we can have affordability now for our customers, but also, I think, even more, if we can afford it in the future. If you go to the next slide. So when we, as we're looking at this balanced scenario, we did do a stress test for the agency in terms of, you know, what would a worst-case scenario look like in regards to the three different scenarios that we're proposing. So with energy, it was really three big major components for energy. For us, there's renewables, the cost of renewable resources, there's resource adequacy, and there's brown powder, just like our baseload costs. And so getting through each of these, for renewable resources, that had gone up basically over the course of the last four years. Even a lot of the renewables, as jurisdictions like Community Power and your different number jurisdictions about these really high renewable targets, and as residents, not purchasing solar panels for the houses, there's been a lot of demand for renewables. With that, if you take into the supply, the supply hasn't kept up with demand, and so we've seen renewal prices increase over the course of the last four years. If you think through today, especially with the current administration kind of rolling back some of the Inflation Reduction Act renewable initiatives and with tariffs, it's entirely possible, in this worst-case scenario that we modeled, that renewal prices continue to increase. And the second thing here is resource adequacy. So we remember back in 2020, with rolling backouts happening in California, resource adequacy costs have increased over the course of the last four years. And then more recently, with the always slice-a-day framework that's being rolled out, we do still anticipate potential resource adequacy prices increasing, and we continue to model that as a worst-case scenario if we knew our resource adequacy prices continue to increase. And the last thing here is just baseload or just brown power prices. So those prices have gone down over the course of the last three years, and it's entirely possible that those prices could continue to go down, especially with the current administration rolling back regulations for drilling. So as the current administration promotes potentially more fracking, more drilling, it's possible that those prices could continue to go down. And that, I think, affects the IOUs more than it does SCGNE in terms of mineral prices, because we play more in the renewable space than our competition. So taking all these three things together, with renewable prices going up, with resource adequacy going up in this first-case scenario, and with the brown power prices going down, if you go to the next slide, we remember what that might look like in this recommended approach. So in the balance approach, if that worst-case scenario were to play out, that would potentially lead to $125 million hit to our reserves. Now, we think with the BaaS approach, that $125 million hit could be absorbed by the agency, and it's still dealing with that financial stability in order to navigate through a worst-case scenario, and again, still deliver affordability for our customers and still be around for the long term. If you go to the next slide. I think you guys, we talked a lot about reserves and a lot about our credit rating. So what does that mean for the agency? So if the agency built a 180-day cash on hand reserve as adopted in our strategic goals, not only would it give financial stability for the agency, kind of as mentioned earlier, but it would lead potentially to an investment-grade credit rating that we could use to leverage a lot of things. I'll give you some examples. So one of the good things that we could do with an investment-grade credit rating, if we build our reserves, is it could help a lot with our purchase agreements. Again, the cost of energy is our biggest cost driver. If you just think about these big energy providers who are building, you know, up to $1 billion solar farms that we're buying energy from, they have bought these farms that have been selling energy to customers like SECP over the course of the next 20 to 30 years. The idea is that they want to sell energy or look to sell energy to somebody who's not financially stable. The idea is that over the course of the next 20 to 30 years, they want to sell their energy to customers like SECP who are going to be around for the long term and who could continue to buy their energy. So when you think about buying and negotiating with somebody's long-term PPAs, if we're doing an investment-grade credit rating, we should be able to negotiate much more favorable terms if we have a credit rating, because we can share our financial stability, and it's a signal to the marketplace that we'll be around for the long term, and it would lead to much lower energy prices that we could pass on to our customers in terms of affordability. If you kind of go to the next slide here. So this board has done a really good job in terms of hitting our strategic goals and has put us on good footing to kind of continue to hit our strategic goals. So we have hit our 90-day cash on hand strategic goal. We're on track to hit our 180-day cash on hand strategic goal, especially if we got that balance approach. That balance approach should give the agency the ability to hit 180 days cash on hand by the stated October 2025 strategic goal date that we set. And again, we think the balanced approach gives us the opportunity, not only to be affordable for our customers today, we mentioned it a few times, to be affordable for our customers in the long term as we have a stable financial footing. And then beyond that, the 180 days cash on hand will give us the ability to get this credit rating. And with that credit rating, we should be able to, you know, negotiate better terms on longer-term PPAs. We should be able to leverage funds more, for example, there's a lot of grant funds out there. And with a stable cash base, we can use those internal reserves to leverage outside funding. As a lot of these grant sources, as you guys know, we're not only matching, but the more leveraging you could show, the more money you could bring in for the region for our customers. And the last thing that we just had in terms of our strategic goals, our rate stabilization reserve. We do also want to have a rate stability for our customers. Instead of having a winter rate and then a much higher summer rate, we do want to build this rate stabilization reserve so we could have one constant rate for our customers, and that rate stabilization will go a long way to having a much more simple rate that we could pass on to our customers. All that to say, before I hand it back over to my colleague, Lucas, I'm going to say, I think we think the balanced approach, as a staff recommendation, gives the ability for affordability now, affordability for the future, and also to have a really solid financial base for the agency. And I'll turn it back over to my colleague, Lucas.
Thank you, Tim. Over to the next slide, please. So in terms of mechanics, as it relates to the balanced approach, what does that look like, right? This slide deck, this slide here captures the fact that the balanced approach allows for SECP or Community Power's rate to be lower than SCGNE, including an FCI and the franchise. We have previewed the complication notion to the board for a bit, I think, over the past two months. And so with this recommended balanced approach, we're recommending three sets of rates relative to the vintage year that then allows for all of our customers to realize this is a second value proposition, right, that the burden means for them to receive. Over to the next slide, please. So what does the balanced approach look like in terms of what the customer can expect to see? This slide here captures a typical residential customer in our territory, and you can clearly see on the right-hand side, especially a lot of plant initiative to the total generation line right there. You can see that for power bills, the 5% discount is clearly visible, and the 3% discount for power on also. And then last but not least, the average monthly bill for a typical residential customer, and what customers can expect to see. So again, I just want to concentrate attention to the board that this is pertinent to a superior product, right? It's renewable, and it is definitely less expensive than the competition. And this trend or this trajectory is similar for all customer classes. The next two slides will enshrine that. Over to the next slide, please. This slide here captures the exact same mechanics for a large, medium, commercial industrial customer on our most predominant rate, ALTOU, and you can clearly see it's the exact same mechanics here as well. And so is true for a small commercial customer on the next slide. To the next slide, please. Great. So this slide here essentially just raised the attention of the board in terms of the mechanics of what has yielded our slap-recommended balanced approach. We have previewed this deck, I think, twice in the last two months, and essentially just incorporates the SCGNE filings as those have moved through the year in 2024 through 2025. Last, we did this presentation in December. The projected commodity rates for SCGNE were expected to increase by 6.2% on system average, but certainly the condition did not meet the full revenue requirement. And so what ended up getting approved by the commission is the column on the far right, which essentially denotes the fact that SCGNE commodity rates have increased on system average by 3.32%. Over to the next one, please. So this slide essentially incorporates the exact same themes that Tim and I have both been covering this morning, which are the three scenarios that we previewed for the board, but conservative, the balanced and the uncertain. And again, it is no secret that there's a lot of uncertainty in the market face as it relates to the federal environmental climate, and we certainly believe that the balanced option allows for the agency to essentially meet customers where they are at in terms of affordability concerns today and certainly into the future. Over to the last slide for the day. So with the balanced staff recommended approach, what does it mean or what does it entail for our general customers, right? It is essentially going to be acroactive to 21, start with SCGNE rate adjustment for 2025, which is effective as of February 1. Definitely a much superior path in our DPO power on, that is a lot more comfortable than the competition, a relatively lower rate than the competition. So doubling up the discount for our power base reduction, which is our cost-effective service option for our customers, that also be slightly more comfortable than the competition. And the fact that we're keeping study our Power 100 premium, but isn't changing, and certainly not for our Power 100 green plus, which is greenly certified for our commercial customers that have ambition. It allows for the organization and the agency to essentially balance the needs of the customers now in terms of offering them superior product that is lower cost than the competition, and also allows for us to build on our financial strategic goals that the board has set for the agency. It satisfies our current obligations with lenders and power purchase agreements, generally speaking, and it prepares the agency, not only today, but certainly for centuries to come. And that actually concludes our presentation for this morning. We are burning, just to take any comments, questions, or feedback from the board. Thank you.
Thank you so much to staff for doing such a wonderful job and explaining very clearly what we're doing here today. I am very proud of the work you've done. I think this is how we meet the moment. We have record-breaking climate change impacts. We have sea level rise, wildfires, droughts, flooding, and they're continuing to be accelerated at a rate that goes beyond what scientists at first predicted. But also acknowledging that communities and working families are hurting, their pocketbooks are stretched thin. And I think this is how we meet the moment, by offering a balanced approach while still ensuring that we are financially solvable and prudent so that we can continue to exist and continue to offer this service that is competitive and at a lower rate than our competitors. So I very much look forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say as well. And Mari, is there any public comment first?
There's no public comment, I'll just ship high and receive them. But yeah, which I copied and placed at the dais for you.
So that is entered into the record. Any comments or questions for my colleagues on the dais?
Thank you, Trudy Chair. Thank you for the report.
Thank you, Director Chair. Thank you for the report. I have a question. Can you go back to that slide, please? The one that you are recommending. Thank you for the scenarios to Lucas, this one. So that margin that we're talking about forty four and I just wanted Jack to. Repeat what he had said to me during my briefing.
Sure. Thank you for the question, Director Yumane. When we're evaluating our budget projections, you know, we are looking at a fifty million dollar net operating margin as a zero sum budget. On an annual basis because of all because of all the typical volatility in the market and the uncertainty that we manage. So that's really for us, that's where we typically land, like we plan for.
Thank you, Jack. I'm reading your recommended scenarios, Lucas, and how many? Is there a forecast of how many more PPAs we're going to have? Because I know we have several and we have a contract of up to twenty years. So is there a forecast of PPAs in the future?
Thank you for that question, Director Yumane. I'm actually going to call my colleague Baron Bosberg.
For this year, twenty five, twenty six.
I think it's a great, great question, Director, and good morning. Happy Friday, everyone. We're actively in the market to. In ongoing negotiations with a number of contracts for long term PPAs and we will be active in the market for a while. Again, as you're all aware, we've signed a number of long term PPAs recently to do a lot of good work to hedge a lot of our costs in the future. But we still have more work to do. I think in a couple of presentations recently, we've shared kind of the amount of renewable energy we have secured under long term contract. That's currently and I should caveat all this, of course, as Lucas and Tim and Jack all have spoken to. Renewable energy development right now is that the error bars have never been wider. Maybe, well, maybe the pandemic was probably similar, but again, just given the uncertainty. The federal level with permitting, with financing and potential trade wars, right? We have long term contracts, we expect them to be delivering in the next couple of years as expected, but. Error bars just increased sixfold, right? So we do have, we're projecting fifty to sixty percent of our renewable energy at least under long term contract by twenty twenty seven. So we will continue to contract for more of that over time. But I'll note the fifty to sixty percent itself is even subject to change.
Thank you, Director. And my other question would be, how confident are we with SDG SDGNE's rate? Mr. Jack? Or Lucas?
Yeah, I'm not unglad to take that question. I think in terms of the confidence levels. We do have a few still pending proceedings at the California Public Utilities Commission. Their apps were planned out in twenty twenty five and maybe materially move right direction. It's predominantly going to be on the delivery side based on the public filings that we've seen. But it's not to say that staff is not constantly reviewing each and every filing that goes through the C P U C. To see where rates, particularly the commodity rates will be. So we know for a fact that in this year. The old avenues are required to institute income graduated fixed charges. But this will permanently be on the delivery side. And so the we, I mean, we may see a rate movement. And we are keeping a very close eye on it and we will be reporting to the board. In our board staff reports as well as presentations in terms of where those proceedings are. And in terms of status and where we can expect to see the advancement of us in the marketplace.
Thank you. So we said that this is going to take effect February of twenty twenty five. How are we informing our rate payers of this? Hopefully this passes good news.
Thank you for the question. That's awesome. We have been working very deliberately to create a very comprehensive customer resource. That includes from the comments on my perspective, the website updates and everything. And as soon as the vote concludes this morning, all of that will be circulated out. So that customers are hearing the not only users, but they have an hour to come to. Committing to staff members, whether they are current support, which I highly recommend for any of you to call. And we're set to self solve to essentially understand the action that the board has taken this morning.
Thank you. How do we, how, excuse me, how does our rate payer benefit from the rate stabilization?
Thank you for the question. Basically, as well, we benefit from the action that the board takes today. Which essentially gives them a certain relief, right? But also sets the agency to offer that meaningful material relief for years to come. And so I think we need to take the San Pedro and the one that exists in the marketplace today. It is going to be beneficial to the energy customers. We're getting a lot of inquiries, particularly. It's going, are we expecting it? Are you guys? And so I think the action that the board takes today will definitely greatly help. Smell the confidence that our customers are in our in our agency as it relates to our renewable energy mission.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Next, Director Lukas.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to the entire team for the good work that you've done. I think the one thing I didn't heard here that I did hear at the briefing is that you ran like twelve different models trying to figure out. All the levers that Community Power can pull to try to set the rates. I think this is my fourth rate setting meeting over the years and it's never easy. And the things that I think about in getting the briefing and then hearing your presentation today. Is that while we have seen remarkable growth of this organization from literally nothing five years ago to where we are today serving. If I'm correct, a million customers. That we're not done growing. We're still maturing as an organization, especially in terms of our financial wherewithal. And the goals you mentioned about the hundred eighty day reserve that we're trying to build going forward. And so there's that delicate balance of trying to be sensitive to our customers. And the rate payers from a financial point of view, especially in today's world with the stabilization of the organization. And one of the things that's always struck me as a board of elected officials. This may be the closest that any of us sit in our official capacity in running the business. At the end of the day, this was really running the business. And 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 that different perspective that at least for me, that I brought to it and you all have helped me over the years to under. Understand the challenges that we that we have. And I always, you mentioned it, but I always want to emphasize that we're also delivering a better product. And we have that opportunity to develop a better or to deliver a better product at a better price going forward. I appreciate Director Yumane's question about SDGNE because as obviously a very mature organization. A for profit organization, they have a lot more levers to pull than we do. We saw that very dramatic reduction in rates last, but a couple of years ago. That nobody believed was going to be continued going forward. But in a moment of bad PR, they have that opportunity to say, we're just going to cut rates. And and try to make our customers happy and then get backed up to a more normal rate structure. In terms of, I really also appreciate Director Yumane's question about how are you going to communicate with our customers? The one thing I would absolutely hope that you don't do is put out misleading emails like SDGNE did, I think within the past week. That perhaps all of us got that I got a little excited about. And then you start scrolling down and get into the fine print and what did it really mean? So I appreciate the integrity of this organization that we are very transparent and we are no nonsense. In terms of what we're doing, we're like, the organization is on a mission and every day we make more progress towards towards that mission. For my colleagues new on the board, the introduction of power base. Was again, a very strategic move to offer customers who were more price sensitive. Than the mission of renewable energy and gave a real cost savings that they could. Fall to, so to speak, going forward. And I think that's the success doesn't feel like the right word, but it really was a very serious opportunity. And to your point, Lucas, about the sensitivity to our customers going forward, so. Really, under the balanced condition, really excited to see what kind of discount that really offers those customers going forward. There was a little bit of talk about where our future is. And I appreciate Byron, your work and the entire team in terms of those purchase agreements. It was only. Last year that we opened the very first one, solar farm out of Hopeville. That was built strictly for us, strictly for community power. And so that was a huge moment out there in the middle of nowhere. But it was a huge moment, but you know, whatever your politics are, there clearly are a lot of headwinds coming out of Washington. And whether it is a perspective about the importance of renewable energy. There are so many other things that the federal government can do that can be disruptive to all those. Power agreements that we have that will make them infeasible and they may disappear on us. And if we have to continue to operate the way we are, which is more on the spot market. Trying to scramble for pieces of the action. Those prices will be highly variable year after year where we're really trying to get to. We've got these things, they're meeting our demand, we can lock in the certainty going forward. The. The other thing I'll say, I concede with this being my last meeting, but I'm never going to convince Dr. Washington to do his. Spreadsheets differently. So that operating margin, I really look at as a contribution to our reserve. If we hit that target, you know, all that will go into our reserve. And if things play out differently, that's the the play that we have in our numbers going forward. So I always like zero base. Financial to actually get to zero, he's never agreed and I conceded that argument, so. But I think that's the important thing. That's the contribution to the reserve. And as you said, whether we make the reserve contribution that we would like to. Doesn't hurt us in the financial markets. We ever have to dip into those reserves has severe implications again. And so having just enough of a margin that we can afford. Be prudent, be respectful of our customers going forward, so. With that, I'll look forward to the comments of my colleagues, but I will move the staff recommendation, pursue the balanced scenario.
I second that, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you, Pastor Lukawa, for your very insightful and always precise comments. I very much appreciate them. We're going to go now to Director Shaker.
Thank you, Chair. Director Lukawa had a lot of great things to say about this organization and where you guys have come and as a newbie here in our conversations. And during my brief on Wednesday. I I was wondering if we have any projections or actually the screens that you showed for option two for option one. With where we are with the with the volatility of the direction for the writings on the wall. And brown power going down. I'd be very concerned that if we don't meet that rate. To be able to get the loans or stuff of that nature to to manage through. That an SDGNE could very quickly undercut the situation with with stuff coming down. And so I know that we want to. Kind of going off of what Director Lukawa said, that you're not just paying for power in this place, in this situation, you're paying for. Saving the earth ultimately, right? That's the the power one hundred is the person's willing to pay over to make sure that they're they're basically putting their money where their mouth is and wanting to do their part. And so I would be interested to see what the conservative route looks like in this time of of uncertainty. Just to see where where that may if then, because it's it looks like if we get to our reserve model, we actually hit that we don't just hit. Our one eighty, but we actually get a credit rating that makes us a lot stronger. And so the sooner we get there, the sooner we get to a place where we're not as leveraged. And so I I would look to see if there is a that projection. And really where, and I know that we would like to stick to a one time a year rate adjustment. But as we as we realize, if there's a way for us to get to that rating sooner, I know October is that time. And I'm not sure if we would get there any sooner if we went the conservative route, so. It seems that as we get into the summer months, that's our that's going to be our leveraged months. And that's just before the window and it also ends up being a lot of time of. Legislative fallout, especially with the new administration just getting here. So I wouldn't I wouldn't go past, and I appreciate your guys' recommendation to keep us there. But again, to be in this program, you're you're trying to make a step towards. Towards a not just a better rate, but for a couple of pennies on the dollar to be able to help. Do our part to save the earth, so I would I would not put that one completely out. Obviously, you guys are the professionals and the experts, so your recommendations, but to to thin this too. Too narrowly, I wouldn't want to push us into a bad place by not taking a hard look at the conservative route. Like, I know you guys did twelve models and the sixty three million versus the forty four. I guess I'm saying I'm leaning more towards towards let's get there sooner. So we don't send on the other side of summer when it when we do go through our heat wave, which is just one of a compound emergency that we could have with. Our projections being six, seven hundred and sixty seven million off. It's a big number, especially when California is pushing towards all, you know, all electric by twenty thirty five and some of that. So the power, they're not really helping us. Our own, our own state that's trying to push that is not actually really helping us get to that direction, as they say they are, so. If we're kind of standalone. We may really want to look at the conservative route just a little bit longer, just to make sure that we don't overstep that moment. Because if those projections are off, plus brown power going down. I don't know. If I'm hedging my bets, I would say the conservative route might be the might be, and I'm not saying, I don't, your recommendations are. Absolutely at the forefront of my brain where I want to go, but. If you guys have those at all, kind of the same comparisons you did for your number two, the balanced approach. Do you have those those projections of what those numbers look like and the rates and whatnot?
Yes, thank you for the question, Director. Our CFO is primed to answer that and we can add additional context.
But I'd start by saying I could not. Formulating, analyzing, making. I have the finance team. I have my my wish, it would be to go to. And so that being said, the balanced approach is sort of not to sound cliche, but it really strikes a fine balance. As far as an organization and how we can deliver as a mission driven, vision focused organization. To make sure that we can fire off and approach our mission vision. And it means the way to be in impact, it costs me a lot now, but it's been slated several several years to come. And it continues to provide choice. So the detailed analysis, it's shown in this slide. Michael Jones, I'm not sure what's happening, but anyway, hopefully you can hear it, yes. But you know, we've done some analysis and shown as shown in this slide by the margin. That sixty three million dollar contribution to our reserves certainly gets us to that target sooner than later. But again, with a balanced approach, we can still get there and at the same time still provide that value props, give some focus. And pay some attention to what our customers are telling us and responding in the way they want. So I'll consider my my comments there and I swear between other comments. to the other comments, because I don't know if we had any other additional color that we brought to each other about the analysis of the margins.
Yeah, thanks, Director. Just one additional comment. In this topic, we also need to know in terms of a credit rating, S and P Global Ratings, which is one of the premier credit rating agencies that are out there, they not only consider your reserves, I mean, it's definitely a big consideration, but they also consider rates competitiveness and affordability. So even with the conservative scenario, yes, it does build reserves more quickly. But it's not the only consideration with the credit rating. And so that's, and we did consider a lot of factors when we looked into it. And so that's kind of where the balance approach came from, is considering all those factors, all the ratings and metrics that we see from the credit rating agency. That's why we recommended the balanced approach.
Thank you all for your very, very detailed analysis and every, and the answers to that question. Again, again, I'm willing to lean into the motion that's been made and to your guys' recommendation. I just, just while we're here on record kind of thing is the the projection is way higher than, I'm sorry, the actual rates are way higher than what we projected, you know, in twenty twenty-one, with the brown power coming down and the legislative model. I'd be much happier if we reached, I know it's multiple things that they look at for a credit rating, but I'd love to be there in April before we hit the start of what could be a compound model as the administration federally gets its its speed going by the time we come into the, you know, the turn of the next calendar year. And so we're just looking at a, here's the problem I see, and I don't know where we are, but if we do hit our reserves and this company is not around, then we don't serve anybody. And that's the only thing I'm worried about. I know you guys are obviously worried about that as well. So I'm not oblivious to that, but again, it's here, we're here now. As taxes have increased all throughout the county and different cities and everything, I think everybody's seen the writing on the wall, so. I'll leave it there. And again, I'm leaning towards your guys' balanced approach, but I just want to make sure that if I wouldn't, I wouldn't be upset to see a conservative, what the conservative numbers actually look like and what the ratepayers paying, if it's right there at SDG, even in the I forget the terms, the discounted, the power base. If it was right there at SDG, the problem is I know SDG can undercut us at any minute, so. Would that be somewhere where we could hit under our reserves or we could alleviate, even though we want to do one rate a year? Would there be a spot where if SDG is going to try to undercut the market and do kind of a, I would say a shoddy version of that, but for us to be able to meet them and match them if absolutely necessary, just because we're trying to play fair ball and they're playing by a different set of rules. So I wouldn't be against that, but I will.
Thank you, Director Schaefer, for the questions. So in terms of the, our, our development policy that the board approved in twenty twenty-two, whatever our objectives or critical objectives is rate stability. But that's not to say that, you know, we set rates once a year and that's that. I think in the policy itself, it does say, you know, we're keeping an eye on what the market is doing, we're keeping an eye on what the competitor is doing, we're keeping an eye on all moving variables. And if and when there is a need for an intra-year rate adjustment, recommendation, stock definitely will come back to the board and present that option accordingly.
So again, it goes back to my point. If we were to go a conservative route with the, you know, the earmark model that if we see a massive drop because of brown power decreasing, that's the one I'm worried about. It's not so much the projections, it's that the brown power is coming and fracking is happening, and that is a very well-stated throughout the last year, four years of campaigning, whole deal. It's happening. So I don't want us to be misunderstood that we're sitting here on the hope model. It's, I don't think that that's the right model, and we need to understand that it is happening. So if we wanted to drop the rates, I don't think any customer would be upset with that mid-year while we keep this, this company up and afloat and running confidently. So again, I'll leave it there and let the other directors speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your important questions. Director Sinsutti.
Thank you for your work and your research. I know you folks have done a lot of work. I can tell because it's involved and you've run all these scenarios. I, like many others, are very concerned about the federal legislation we're facing. And the first question I have is, do you have a list of the specific potential issues that could be caused by those rollbacks? And I'm asking this because I'd like to know that we are aware of the mitigation efforts. I spoke on this briefly this morning, but I'm just, I'm curious because I want to know that we're ready for it. And I, I share Director Schaefer's some of his about maybe we go the conservative route, but I also believe that we can't in some ways because we have to show the consumers and the people that we are with them, and affordability is big. People are every day going home and wondering if they're going to be able to, and the average person doesn't know if they're going to be able to afford their utility bills. We don't want that, especially in California and San Diego in particular. So this is a, this is kind of a, you know, I, but I want to know about our mitigation efforts because I'm very concerned about that. And I'm just concerned about how, if they start rolling back things, how the PPAs are, and how are we going to handle that?
I guess my mic's on. Good thing I have no hot mic moments. That is a great question, Director, and appreciate the comments. And Jack and Sam with more here, as his team, the regulatory and legislative space is tracking as much as we can. And we've got a number of tracking initiatives as well, just to track, keep up as best we can, right? And so I think we're, we're in the middle of kind of an audit as well of our portfolio now to see where, where resources are in development, what risks, I guess, what milestones are yet to be completed and what risks stand. So we're doing the best we can with the information we have. I think the, the theme unfortunately also is it's the flood the zone approach, right? Is dillying for everyone, right? In our, in our industry and everyone's. So I think that's the, you know, with the the known unknowns, the known unknowns we have, we're doing everything we can to track and monitor. Unfortunately, there's also a lot of unknown unknowns at this point as well. So kind of the, you know, error bars are wide as ever. So we can follow up with you, and again, I don't know if Jack wants to say anything more about the the federal legislation that we're, we're federal kind of tracking, we're doing with all the new questions, but we can share that with you afterwards as well.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, perhaps if I could just build on that for a moment, you know, as I've shared in some of the briefings leading up to today, we have an outstanding regulatory team tracking these changes. I mean, there's a lot coming at us all, all of a sudden, the last couple of weeks, right? So and there's also a lot of noise. So we're trying to make sense of that. We're working with consultants, folks in Washington, collecting this information. And Byron and his team in Power Services is actually working with our developers. So we're getting on-the-ground information from developers as we speak, so. We're collecting all this information. We'll be sharing with the board as we learn more. Right now, we are in a data gathering phase, and we should have more to share in the next couple of weeks, but this is going to be an ongoing issue for us. We know that not only this year, next year, but throughout this administration. And so we may come to the board with regular updates on what we see. And as we learn more, we're able to put a finer point on the cost impacts for the organization and thereby the customers. And to Lucas's point, we can be nimble in terms of coming back to the board and coming back with a new rate proposal if we see the need at that time. So a lot happening right now. You know, we are nimble and we are tracking to the best of our ability.
Thank you.
Captain Sivya comments and questions? Okay, we're going to go back to Director Yamanis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that I believe this document that they are, this proposal that are being presented to us are, is a living document that our staff are so, their ears, mind are on the ground, trying to monitor everything. Nothing will pass the eyes of Tim and Eric. I know that. With regards to government relations, our, our CEO and her team in the government affairs also are very well-informed of what's happening. So I am confident that when time comes that this document needs to be adjusted, just like what Jack said, we're nimble. We're going to be on it right away. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no more director comments or questions. I agree. It's something I asked during the briefing. We are all concerned out of what's coming out of VC, and we're also trying to balance the need to stay competitive. We're also trying to keep our customers top of mind while being fiscally responsible so that we can continue to offer these rates into the future. So there's a lot of unknowns, but I agree. I think that we have the power to bring this back and to make decisions in the short, near or long-term future. So I appreciate everybody's comments and questions. I'm going to read the motion into the record. And since we have a motion in a second. The motion is to review and approve rate adjustments for the power base and power on services as contained in Attachment A to go into effect retroactively to February first, twenty twenty-five. The recommendation includes San Diego Community Power default power on service electricity generation commodity rates that are three percent less expensive compared to San Diego gas and electrics. Generation rates and power-based service electricity generation rates that are five percent less expensive than SDG and E's. Power One Hundred and Power One Hundred Green E certified will maintain Caribbean premiums of point zero one kilowatt per hour and point zero two kilowatt per hour respectively. We have a motion by Director Lukawa and a second by Director Yamanis. Please call the board.
Director Insunza?
Yes.
Director Schaefer?
Yes.
Director Lukawa?
Yes.
Director Susuki?
Yes.
Director Yamanis?
Yes.
Chair Aguirre?
Yes.
Motion carries, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Well, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and I appreciate everyone's work and efforts. We are adjourned. See you next time.
Thank you, Madam Chair.